Order. It's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I am going to ask if we have any public comment on agenda items. Nope. Okay, seeing none, we will suspend the rest of public comment to the end of our meeting, and we will start with school board member updates. Does anyone have anything from their committees they would like to report on?
You went to, I think, sorry.
On the steering committee, I only got to the first one, but basically you have the plan in your packet, and I think the biggest thing is that we were just going to make it things for the future as opposed to all the overwhelming things that we had put in for our goals.
Yeah.
So that was the most important thing I felt that we really needed to do to make progress. You have to kind of focus on a few things rather than this big, huge packet. And the other thing was the, I went to the math curriculum meeting, and the big takeaway from that is that we are doing, piloting some new programs to have a look at some new curriculum programs instituted.
That's great.
Those are the two I had.
The big ones. Budget committee started up yet? You guys got a little time?
Got a little time.
Got a little time.
Our budget should be out in two weeks. Our budget should be out in two weeks.
You got anything, Molly? The only thing I have is the PTA Halloween event is scheduled for October 19th. That will be 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Tuck Field. That should be a fun event. They're going to have inflatable carnival games, and we're going to have a few trunks. It's not going to be the big trunk or treat event that we have done. They're changing it up a little bit. Trying to think of what else. The rec department is getting ready for the holiday season, and so the tree lighting will be, it's the Friday, it's going to be Friday. Wendy's right there, I'm looking at her. It's going to be Friday, December 6th.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. And there is a change of venue for that this year, and that is going to be also over at the area near, not Tuck Field, but the Meeting Green next to the Historical Society. Founder's Park, yes. Yes, so. And I think that's, I think that's all I have.
Yep, the parade. The parade is on December 7th.
Yep.
Yep, so we got that, too.
All right. Okay, let's do school reports. Mr. Rubadon.
Good evening, everyone. Just some events that I wanted to highlight real quick as we're now over our first month into the school year. In my report, I did note that we had some Winnicottan High School students come visit our second graders as they were doing their unit on community leaders. So it was awesome to see a variety of Winnicottan students come visit Center School. Many of them had come through our building, so it was good for them to reconnect with some staff and talk to our second graders about what makes a good leader. We did hold our first all-school meeting in September, so it was a great way to get the whole school community together and talk about year-long expectations. So it was great to get everybody together. Our Tier Two and Tier Three groupings are underway, so it's been awesome to see, you know, a whole slew of students get the support they need from the staff at Center School. And our Fun Fitness Friday program has started back up, so every Friday, a different grade level, for the most part, gets outside unless it's inclement weather. They get to do some fun fitness activities to start the day a little more regulated, so it's been fun to partake and see all the energy from the kids. We had our, we had our annual open house on September 26th. We had very good attendance, although it was pretty heavy downpours that night, but thank you to all the parents that made their way out to enjoy that evening with us. Just wanted to note that, you know, monthly, I'll be sending out the extended principal news, but I will continue to send out my weekly principal newsletter to all families and staff. So just wanted to note that. I did include the lengthier version in this month's board report. The new preschool playground is very close to being completed. We're just, it's just the fencing that's left, so I'm very excited to get that done very shortly. Just to note, we have Walk to School Day tomorrow, so Center families, along with Marston, we're meeting in the Hampton Academy parking lot approximately 8:00 AM. And just to note, early release day Friday, dismissal starts at noon, and then we have Monday off as well. And does anybody have any questions?
Yes. If you, we have students entering a grade level below their peers, much below the grade level that's expected. What steps or what process do we have to bring them up or to catch them up?
That's a great question. So typically, you know, when we have new students, we get them acclimated to their class and make sure we have a few days under our belts where we're building community, making sure they feel welcomed. But we do have a great intervention team, and we make sure we benchmark all our students. So we would make sure that we spend some time looking at initial reading and math scores and then determine if that student is going to be all set with Tier One instruction or if there are greater deficits, if that student is going to need to be pulled into a Tier Two reading or math group. We also have our SABR's metrics that we review if there's social, emotional learning concerns. So we take an approach to look at the whole child, and then we track the data very carefully throughout the year to make sure they're making progress. If they're not, we can, you know, look at if further interventions needed, depending on what the student's doing to perform. But we usually let them settle in for a week or so before, you know, I grab the reading specialist and make sure that she's ready to do the benchmarking process.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
Question. We still have the buddy bench, don't we, over there?
Yes.
Okay. Just because when I was reading through your playground rules and the Center School rules, I was just hoping that part of it would be to emphasize the students, including those that look lonely or sitting on the buddy bench, or, I don't know, just making a point of...
Yeah, and that's something we can definitely revisit at an all-school meeting. I know that periodically buddy bench topics are revisited with students. Usually all-school meeting's a good place to do that. Our new shade on the Grade Two playground, I believe it oversits that as well, so it is a nice place for kids to take a break or find a, find a friend if they need to reconnect. But I can definitely put a little more emphasis on that going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's also a new book that's come out for primary grades K-3, Bully Beans.
Bully Beans.
And they can do the bully beans and they can implement it, but it's a, it's a neat thing that I discovered the other day.
I'd love to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabler.
Hello. So just a couple things going on at Marston School. There's a lot of stuff going on, but just some of the highlights. Tomorrow, we will be having our open house slash Curriculum Night. A lot of flyers have gone home outlining the times for each grade level. It is a student and caring adult event. And we will be having a bake sale, so if anyone wants to donate to our bake sale, you can drop it off at Marston anytime tomorrow, and that's going to help offset the cost of some of our field trips. Our mentor block, our student mentoring block that we presented on last year kicks off officially on the 18th. As you know, every single adult in our building is assigned a small group of six to 10 students, and the purpose is building connection and giving them one more trusted adult within our building. For families, we do have Pitch a Retake Day taking place on October 30th. And at the end of the month, we'll be having, and we don't celebrate Red Ribbon Week in the same way a middle or high school might. Ours is more about making good choices. So we combine that with our Olvea's Bully Prevention Kickoff, which we've dubbed our Celebration of Kindness every October, and that just kind of sets the stage for our implementation of our Olvea's program, both school-wide and then at the classroom level. So, and Olvea's, of course, is the bully prevention program we've been using for a while in grades K through five. And at this time, we are looking for a third Title One tutor, so if you have a skill of teaching literacy and/or mathematics, the posting is on EdJobs, and you can get there through our website, but just take a look, and we're just looking for some quality applicants to provide targeted instruction for students who may be a little bit below level. Other than that, we're open for questions based on my report.
I think we're good.
All right, take care, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. How are we doing today? So yeah, based off the report, our false testing, our testing is complete on, for both ELA and math. We look forward to disaggregating that data and putting kids and supporting them in our RTI block. On September 18th, I'm sorry, September 18th, we had Brian Gray, our new technology teacher, was a finalist for Teacher of the Year. We had the New Hampshire Board of Teacher of the Year Committee on that date, and it was great to see all the work that he had done in his previous school. We're excited to have him. He's been doing a great job for us. We had a large submarine that he and his former students built right on the stage, and it was great to see all the kids up and taking a look at that. Last week, our 7th grade attended the University of New Hampshire Ocean Discovery Day. Students were able to explore cutting-edge technology for ocean mapping and water monitoring. On October 22nd to the 5th, our 6th grade will be intending environmental camp. After school, our Power Hour has begun, so Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, if anyone wants to stay after for some extra quiet place to do some homework and learn and get some a little more support there. Our AAA, our after-school academic support will begin this Monday. Next Wednesday, the 16th, from 5:00 to 6:00, we will be hosting our open house for parents. Notification went out today through email. Be a great opportunity for everyone to take a walk through the building and get kind of a, have an opportunity to speak to the teachers that their students have. Tomorrow night, we have our ski club meeting here in the cafeteria at 6:00 PM. Want to send a big thank you to Community Oven and Suzie Suites. Last Monday, they hosted us for an 8th grade Washington DC fundraising event. It was really great to see all the members of this great community out to support, and it was really great to see all the hard work that our 8th graders and our 8th grade teams are putting in to offset the cost for our trip. To continue that, we will be at the Fall Festival this Sunday from 11:00 to 3:00. 8th grade will be selling cider. They also have their calendar sale for $10. Reach out to Andrea Dutton if you would like to purchase that. They will also be purchasing those, they'll also be selling those at the Fall Festival. Our teams have done a really great job of communicating weekly with our families of the things that are going on within the classrooms. I know it's pretty challenging trying to juggle all the different things that are going on between their classrooms, so we really appreciate the teams doing that. Please check your emails for that and any updates that we have on our weekly smores. But with that, I'll leave. Do you guys have any questions?
It's not a question. I just wanted to help clarify something for you. As an alumni of many years of environmental school, a question came to me that I was able to answer, but I don't know if all of the students know this. The girls do not have heated toilet seats, and the boys do not have to go out in a shack.
Noted, noted.
There was a rumor going around, and I want to squelch that right away.
Right away.
That is not true.
Nice. I think this would be a good opportunity, we were just in the PTA meeting together, to talk about the issues that you guys are having with social media.
Social media.
And the work that you are, that is ongoing.
Yeah, we are currently dealing with a situation that I don't think is unique just to us. We have an anonymous TikToker out who's been creating a page that has been spreading some pretty hateful things and mean things to other, other kids in our school, and it's really harm, it's sad to see. You know, our efforts between Ms. Levine and myself have really tried to find out who it is, but it is quite difficult. All these posts are being done after school and on weekends, and so unless we see the account on their phone, which is very tricky to do, we really can't nail down who it is. So we're going to be sending out some more information. I know that we have in the past talking about internet safety, but it's really going to take, we, a community, to really kind of find out who this person is or people. You know, it's, we really want to make sure that they, that we help them at this point to see, you know, how, see what's going on and see if there's anything we need to do to support these people, because what they're saying has been pretty helpful, but we also want to hold them accountable for the things that they are saying. You know, so that's going to really take some help from the parents to make sure that they're on the, you know, making sure that they have, they can access the different accounts that the students have, noticing that it's not just one TikTok account that a student has access to, several, which is what I've learned rather quickly as I'm trying to investigate who these people are. But like I said, it's not just something that we're dealing with, but it's going to definitely take a community to do so. We've already received tons of help from, from parents and anonymous people in the community, but, you know, we just want to make sure that we are, all of our kids are supported, and if there's something that we can do to educate these people who are making these, these decisions, that would be, that would be really great.
If I could say just one thing, first off, I know that you and Mrs. Levine have spent an inordinate amount of time trying to investigate this at the school level. One of the things that has come clear to me, although I'm not a TikTok user, I have heard that what, what is happening, and speaking with both of you, is that these accounts can be made anonymously, making it very difficult to track who is the actual creator of it, or you can actually create a fake identity. And so as a result, you really can't get to who is actually the one that is not only who owns it, but also who's posting it. So with that being said, it makes it even that much more difficult to drill down to see who would be making the very hurtful posts, number one, and number two, to control it. So we are asking our parents and our community members to please, as we say, be watchful of what your children are doing on the weekends and, you know, at night, because this is oftentimes when it happens, and although it doesn't happen in the school, what happens is the fallout from that. Children wind up feeling, feelings get hurt, feelings, feelings are unsafe, and all of those things that come as a result of hurtful things being said anonymously, really. So we ask for the parents and the community's oversight, and please make sure you're checking what your children are doing online.
And I do just want to bring up that, you know, I don't want to paint everyone as a broad brush. A lot of our students have brought us these concerns, and they are taking, taking action in their own way. We were able to get one of the accounts blocked just recently, so that's, that's great. However, another one quickly popped right up, and so we're back, we're back at it again. We've been, we've been surprised at the amount of support that we've received, so we're very thankful, but, you know, I don't see this, I don't foresee this stopping until we find out who this person is, so.
Seacoast Online this Sunday did a big article on Rochester Middle School and what they're doing, and their new, their new superintendent brought out a program from California that they're using. You may want to look at that at some point.
Ms. Levine and I were talking about that. You know, we are open to doing anything that we can to make sure that our kids are making the right choices. You know, in our classrooms, we've already brought out this education, you know, as far as our, our digital footprints and the things that we say online and ways, and it was pretty powerful. Back to our Teacher of the Year lesson, it was pretty amazing to see all the insightful things that the kids are saying as we educate them through saying what happens if someone says hurtful things online, what can you do, you know, and also empowering students to say, just because, you know, to build them up doesn't necessarily, themselves up doesn't necessarily need, mean that they have to put someone down. Using a candle analogy, your candle won't get smaller if you light someone else's candle. So it was really powerful to see and to hear, talking with Mr. Gray and, and everyone, and, you know, we are really rallying behind it. So we're doing our best, but, you know, it's going to take, you know, we're not at home on the, on the weekends and in front of this, you know, in front of the kids' phones, but it is alarming, but we are very thankful for the support that we've received. Hopefully, we can continue to, to figure out who this is and, you know, and handle it appropriately.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any, any more questions? No? Okay, thank you. Let's track a little bit of where we are. Dr. Silvanaptin.
Good evening, nice to be here. Good to see you all. You do have my report, and the Hampton Alliance for Thriving Children is up and running, and we're excited. We're going to start a couple of projects this year. We're going to be working on a welcome baby bag for Hampton residents, and we're getting a little subcommittee together to see what that would look like and how we would get parents of new children to get a welcome bag from Hampton Public Schools in the Hatch Committee, so that's exciting. And the playgroup at Center, we're again working on that one, hoping for a January start-ish, we'll see. And we're very excited about the preschool playground, which is nearly complete. If you haven't seen it yet, the asphalt is down. We are just waiting for the fence, and we'll be having a ribbon cutting. There'll be more information, will come out about that. And vacancies, so as you know, it's been a rough fall with special education, with the contracted personnel that we have in our buildings, and that in turn just is a big spiral and domino effect with the whole building. We're all picking up pieces because contractors can't work as much as our full-time employees because they cost more money. So we have settled down now in all of our buildings with all our contracted staff. Things are rolling along, and we have schedules and things are covered, but we do still have some openings, and they are still posted. So if anyone is out there not under contract, we have a case manager position, actually two case manager positions, a school psychologist position and an RBT or a behavior-trained para at the academy, and a speech pathologist. Those are a lot of openings, but we have filled them with, like I said, contracted people, and other people in the building are picking up pieces, so we are comfortable where we're at for the moment.
How much is a contracted psychologist and case manager and speech pathologist compared to what a regular salary would be?
So the easiest way to say is about, you can get half of a contractor for the price of a full-time person as an employee. It's about half.
Just to be clear, we are only contracting out for speech-language pathology.
And school psychology.
And psychology.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Two days a week.
Yep, both of them are, two, it's half.
Yep.
Two and a half. Yep.
Does that make sense? I just didn't want you to think we were contracting out all of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just for contract, just information. So contracting means that we hire a third-party company who hires and vets their own employees, and then we work with that company, and the company gives us, that person gives us, we pay. But obviously, there's a third party involved, therefore, they, they charge an hourly rate, and that, that's how we pay for the employees, at an hourly rate.
All right, so if I'm on the budget committee and I say to you, okay, you've been a year with a contracted half psychologist, why do you need a full-time psychologist?
Oh, I can, we can answer that question, and we will be prepared to answer it. We are barely covering the minimum things that need to be covered, and many people in the building are picking up pieces all along the way and doing different jobs than they've been asked to do in the past.
Okay.
I can, I can absolutely say that with confidence and be happy to tell anybody that. It is very challenging when we think we have a full-time position and we only, they're only in the building two days a week, so we are, we are scrambling, we are covering. I mean, I'm feeling it at the SAU because I'm trying to schedule a meeting, and oh, that person's only here on Monday. Well, that one's only here on Wednesday, and well, we have a crisis on Tuesday, so we pull from another building. The specialized staff, Miles, the BCBA, school psychologists are going from building to building. The social worker is stretched over three buildings now. She's counseling students. It's, we are all, what we've done is we've stretched, 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 and it's going to be very nice when we get back to hiring our own employees on a full-time basis so we can then service the kids in a more quality fashion.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, Mrs. Levine had something else tonight. Do we, is Nick or someone else going to come out to do technology? Do we know, or are we just going to skip that for tonight, which is fine?
She's not here tonight.
No, she had something else, I know, so. Okay, so we will, we have Tim's written report. If anybody have any, has any questions, they can get in touch with him directly after the meeting. Okay, Mr. Lassar.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's well. Things are going well in facilities. I guess we should talk about winter's coming, and it's important to be prepared for winter. Our projects are concluding. In case you hadn't heard, the police school playground is doing well. We're waiting for the fence. We're working on the other projects. I guess that's really about it that I have. If you have any questions, I would bring up that we are looking for facilities manager, and we are looking for custodial staff. So I would just confirm all the rumors. I will be retiring January 1st, 2025, so it's official. Everybody knows, and I hope that we can have a good parting of ways and move towards the future. I wish you all well. Thank you for the support to the department. It's been 24 and a half years, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I've given back some vacation time and some different things. I'm exhausted. I know that if not everybody, most everybody appreciates what I've done and accomplished, and I just want to thank everybody for their support. This will probably be my last school board meeting, so I just want to thank you all very much, and have a good evening.
I don't know, we haven't actually voted on your letter yet, Keith, just FYI. You're not actually released.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, everybody. So tomorrow's a big day. Tomorrow's National New Hampshire Apple Crunch Day. So we're getting apples from New Hampshire and some from Maine, but local apples, farm to school, so that's big. Everybody's getting apples tomorrow. The other, I guess, the other celebration is we have the National School Lunch Week, and that is October 14th to the 18th, so we're going to be doing some menus, kind of, the theme is pirates. So you will see my staff dressed up with some pirate hats and maybe some pirate gear and eye patch. So we're going to have fun with that, that week. We're going to, and I geared the menu towards pirates, pirate chicken nuggets. Anyway, so those are the two happenings. And I know last month, you asked me about September.
Yes.
Numbers, so now that September's over, I have them. So from September, this is district-wide, I didn't break it up, but last year's September to this September, we're 539 breakfast down. Lunch last year to lunch this year, we're 570 up.
Yes.
We're working on that. That September is a tough month. Everybody's starting to see what we put out, see what we give, feeling their, the way around, so it'll go up from there.
How about the forms? How are they coming in?
Forms are good. We're 17% free and reduced, so that's 1% up from last year. And I'm still, now it's trickled, it'll, trickling in one at a time, but...
Are they still offering the deal where if you get 25% or more, you get free lunches or breakfast? Is the state or the government doing that?
Um, that is the government, but...
I don't think it's 25%.
I don't think it's 25% either. I think it's 40-ish.
It's higher.
It's higher.
Yep, it is higher.
So we don't qualify. That's it. Any questions or, all right, awesome.
I think we're good. Thank you.
You look, you look great, Mr. Shepherd.
All right, Dr. Costa.
All right, so on September 10th, we had our training. This year, Tally Westerberg from Winnicottan High School came over and provided our suicide prevention training. I just wanted to give a public shout-out to Tally, who did a fantastic job. It was a heavy topic, to say the least, but she does it with such passion and conviction that is not only informative, but it is also engaging in the interest level. So a big shout-out to Tally Westerberg. We appreciated her visiting with us and taking on such a very sensitive but important topic for all of us, which is required by law now. We also had Chief Reno and Chief McMahon join the leadership team on October 2nd during our leadership team, and during that time, we had the chief sign our emergency operation plans, which are due into the state by mid-October, so we're sending those off. We are continuing to work with... with them on our safety procedures and plans and just so fortunate to have that partnership that we value. Mrs. Borg and I did attend the Rotary Club meeting on September 24th and we had a great conversation with Rotary. And as a result, they have made a donation of $1,000 to the Hampton School District. So a big thank you to Hampton Rotary. And I have a request to accept permission to accept the donation.
Do I have a donation for that? I mean, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Okay, Molly, okay, all in favor?
What does that go?
Check was accepted.
It is going specifically to help defray the cost of students who are on free and reduced that would like the additional food for snacks, because remember, they get a breakfast and lunch, but they do not get snacks or any additional slices of pizza, milk, we, whatever else they would like. So it'll be used for that purpose. And so they were very gracious and said to please reach out and they would do whatever they could to support our students and their families. Also want to let you know that we, as Andrea said, that we did meet on the 5th and the 12th and the conversation was really around, instead of having a very long and lengthy documents about our goals, that we were really going to just narrow down to what's new. So you'll see that the document is much shorter, but it really just focuses on what we're really going to focus on this year. And that came as a result of the conversations we had. So you'll see that, that's in my packet for your review. Also, on September 1st, we had 39 people that attended our book conversation on Anxious Generation with the Lane Library. It was a wonderful evening and it was great to see so many community members, staff, parents. It was just a great, I would say, eclectic crowd from really all over. It just had an interest in having a conversation about the book. So 42 signed up, 39 were present, and we look forward to our next one, which will be November 19th, and we're looking forward to that as well. So just happy to be able to do that with the Lane Library, just a great partnership. And then, obviously, we have our wellness committee that continues to meet and we do just want to make sure that we are being mindful of our staff and making sure that they are taking care of themselves. And recognizing Mr. Lassar and his custodians in honor of Custodian Appreciation Day, we know that they work hard every day keeping our schools clean and we do appreciate all that they do. And as Mr. Robitaille said, we're really excited about our preschool playground that is nearing completion. And then, of course, our SAU 90 security entrance is moving right along. It's always nice to see this progress. And just attending a number of different offerings around safety, specifically from the U.S. Department of Education on suicide prevention and additionally on school safety and security. So great informative sessions that was able to attend. I know that the, later on in this evening, we're going to hear from our administrators that are going to talk specifically about data and student progress. So we'll look forward to talking about that in just a little bit, as well as New Hampshire SAS scores. And you also heard from Andrea that we are going to be piloting a math program this year and we're looking forward to doing that. And we'll be considering that during our budget session because that's something we will have to financially plan for this year. And then, of course, all students have been screened using our Sabers tool, which is a way to identify students that might need additional support through our counselors, our school psychologists. So we've done that screener for our students. And I think that's really about it. Is there anything you have for me? Questions?
I think we're good. Any questions for Dr. Costa right now? Okay, so next on the list is goals. Did you want to talk anymore about the goals or do you think we're all set?
You're welcome to take a look at them. Obviously Andrea was there to represent. If there's something you would like that you would.
I'm just glad that we narrowed it down.
Yes.
And have an area of focus that's a little less cumbersome.
Yep. Yep. And so please feel free, if there's some changes you want to make, there's some focal areas that you'd like me to include, I'm happy to do that. And I know the principals will be building their school goals based off of the district goals, so there'll be a nice alignment, really focusing on those four key areas: communication, safety, professional practice, and of course, equity. So if there's something specific you feel that we should be following up on, we are happy to do so.
All right, so we have, we have a presentation on bullying prevention?
We do.
Okay.
We do. So this is bully prevention month. And as you know, this is, this is an area that we do continue to focus on. And one of the things that unfortunately, or, is that we often, we don't have substanti, we don't have reports. So a lot of times what happens is that I think parents and staff or community feels that this could be a problem in our community, but unfortunately, it's just not rising to our level where we include them in our board reports, which we do, and then we don't, because it doesn't rise to that level. And then therefore, we don't go through the JICK policy. So tonight, the administrators have put together a small presentation to, just to educate everyone on what it is, how we handle it, and what we can do to all work together. And I think what we'll do is they're going to present it. And because I know not everybody is tuning in this evening, is it something that we can have available on our cable station so that we can continue to run it, just so that it is continually ever-present in our community's mind? The safety of our students is something we take very seriously and, which is why it's one of our goals. And so we want to make sure that every child feels safe coming to school. And we want to do our due diligence to partner with families and the community to ensure the safety of every single student. So hopefully, after the presentation, there's some enlightenment. And then, of course, if there are questions, you are welcome to reach out to any of the building principals or myself. But there'll also be something we can post on our cable station that will be a reminder of what it is, how we handle it, and what we can do. So that's really what we're trying to do tonight, is just to get this information out to everybody in recognition of Bully Prevention Month.
All right, we'll start. Yeah, so it's a little bit about some of the preventative and proactive measures that we take as a school and a district. And then, of course, what are some of the steps in terms of how do you report? And then what does it look like once you make a report? Just as an introduction, you know, everyone really plays a role in this. So while things sometimes happen at school, what we've been finding more and more, aside from the internet-based stuff, is that things will happen outside of school and then sometimes impact the school and we have to get involved. And other times, it just becomes an out-of-school event. But really, it's kind of a community-wide effort. The schools are going to do their part, but the more we can model respectful interactions as adults, you know, the students are watching us at all times out in the community. So when we're on the sidelines of a soccer game or leading a scout troop, doing things like that, the more we can work together as a community, the greater impact we're going to have on this. Just some of the things that we do proactively to promote pro-social behaviors. We obviously address unwanted behaviors, but the more we can teach students the correct way to act or the correct way to interact, it's going to be to our benefit. So I'm not going to go in-depth on all of these because we've talked about them so many times, but responsive classroom is one of the bigger things that we use K5. It has to do with a lot of creating positive community, you know, engaging our students in the learning, building connections within the building. I know K5 every day starts off with a morning meeting in every single learning space. I mean, that's a chance to build the classroom community. And then as we were talking about our bigger school-wide morning meetings, that's where we then branch the individual classrooms into our greater school community. We follow the Olvea's Bully Prevention Program. We've been doing that as long as I've been in SAU 90. It is one of the most strongly backed research-based programs. And there's a lot on bully prevention. So it's how do you respond in the moment, what language do you use when you're interacting with kids? But more importantly, there's individual classroom lessons or school-wide lessons that our teachers, integrated arts, and our school counselors teach that really push some of the ideas around getting along with one another, kindness, respect, you know, the same kind of lines around our expectations. I'm not sure how much they're doing with it now, but the middle school has been using some components of PBIS over the years. That's again, looking at behaviors and catching kids doing the right thing, again, promoting the positives or the pro-social things that we want students to do. These happen at the individual classroom lesson, and then, of course, they happen at a school-wide level so that all students are hearing the same messages. And messages that come from these things are reinforced on a consistent basis, you know, with our students because it's necessary. Okay.
All right. Nathan's a little taller than me, so I had to adjust that. So I think, you know, again, not reading word for word, but you know, I think that it's heavily that the school role is, you know, if concerns are popping up, that we're addressing them. You know, at the K to 2 level, you know, students are usually pretty apt to, you know, talk about what's going on at home with a parent. You know, if parents are getting reports of, you know, they feel like their child's being mistreated or there's a behavior issue, you know, we always encourage families to reach out to us so we can address things sooner than later. You know, at our level too, you know, we talk a lot about like, you know, is this conflict or is this bullying? We have the bullying definition later in the slideshow, but we try to, like Nathan said, do a lot of pro-social work for students, you know, in the K to 5 setting. And then the students' role, you know, they participate in our anti-bullying education programs that Nathan just talked about, report bullying or conflict as they see it comes up and let the adults, you know, then take it from there and decide what steps we need to go through as building administrators, support peers who might be victims. And then again, you know, with our pro-social work, trying to refuse, you know, to participate in any kind of negative behaviors. This is the definition of bullying. So again, you know, I'm not going to read it word for word, but you know, some takeaways I've had as an administrator in a different district. Again, going into, you know, and this is for parents at home, you know, whether it's conflict or it's bullying, you know, there's, there's some good criteria on the screen as to, you know, what we'd be looking at if it was a, you know, potential substantiated bullying claim, you know, physical harm, emotional distress, interfering with the child's educational opportunities or their ability to learn in the classroom, creating a hostile educational environment. And, you know, the last one is, you know, disrupting the school day and allowing, you know, a great amount of students not be able to learn. So those are all things we take into consideration if we do get a bullying report. Again, it's going to look very different at each grade level and we're going to handle it, you know, what's developmentally appropriate for the students that we're working with. So yeah, I mean, we, in our, in our building and in our, all the administrators altogether, we know that we definitely take our bullying very serious. We make sure that every student in the building feels safe. And I think that's, and able to be who they are. And so getting out in front of it and, you know, using the, the, every child has a bucket metaphor and trying to fill those buckets with the positives is going to be how we get out in front of it, you know, rather than scolding a kid for doing all the negative, hey, really good positive interaction. That's something that we really try to, try to bring into our schools. So yeah, if we receive a complaint about an alleged violation, you know, we take that and we start our investigation. We, we act on it, we start, we start investigating with the, with the, with anyone who is involved, anyone who might have heard of something, anyone, any school employee who had witnessed it. And what we try to do is we try to paint a picture who was, who was there. A lot of times, it's two people saying one thing and another, so it's important to bring in other people. So it's not, this one said this, this one said this. You know, parents and volunteers can report things anonymously, but it is important that we do get all the information. Like we've said before, if someone is having a hard time, we want to make sure that they, we correct that, we, we talk to the students who are giving them a hard time. And we just want to make sure that everyone feels safe, even the person who is, is a victim of that, is able to come, come to us. And we use our creative ways to make sure that those people are protected. Upon the receipt of a report of bullying, administrators shall commence an investigation consistent with the provisions of Section 9 of this policy. And then this lays out all of our, all of our procedures that we would do. We will report to the parents of the students that we're beginning, we're beginning the bullying report. We'll take school two days, school will take two days to initiate the investigation and a maximum, maximum of five school days from the initial filing of the incident to investigate everything that's going on and come to a conclusion. From there, we will let everyone know what the, what the investigation has come to and, and make sure that we hand out those different consequences. You know, it's important that we're communicating. You know, it's important that when we are handling these situations, that we are holding kids accountable. But again, these are our students and we are our community. And we don't have these kids for a class period. We have these kids for, you know, several years. And so it might take some kids some time, but you know, holding kids accountable and making sure that they, they're learning from what they're doing is, is important as we, as we grow. So.
You know, communication's key throughout this process. You know, you're talking with a lot of kids and a lot of people involved, but of course, the guardians or the caring adults at home. You know, by the time we've completed that five days, 24 hours within that window, we notify via letter and in writing. And I think the thing to realize is whether we go down the route and it's substantiated as bullying or not, most likely, if it's being reported to us and something is true, it's still a violation of our school-wide expectations. So just because it's not necessarily bullying does not mean there's not consequences or disciplinary action taken on a student. We might have something that doesn't rise to the definition of bullying, but it might violate our, our expectation of being respectful or being safe or responsible. So then we have consequences that go along with that. The whole purpose, besides teaching in the front, is teaching on the other end. We're trying to change behavior. So it's not punitive in nature, but more educational, especially, I'll say K8, but K2, and then of course, 3 to 5, students are still learning. They're learning how to be respectful members of a community and of a society, and we need to teach them those skills. It falls on the school as much as it does, you know, outside influences. So, you know, the, the goal is to prevent the unwanted behaviors. If something does occur, it's teaching the child about what are the correct behaviors or helping them learn suitable replacement behaviors. I didn't put the big grid on here, but what I would encourage community members to do is take a look on the website under the school board section under SAU 90 policies. It outlines pretty much all of this information. At the end is a really nice matrices that sort of outlines at a developmentally and age-appropriate level, you know, a first infraction, second, third, and fourth, and what some of those steps might be that we would take on the other side. One thing I'll say is, when we do take disciplinary action against a student, it's not shared with the other families. That's part of their educational records and it's protected under FERPA. Sometimes we get a little bit of heat because people want to know what happened to their child. I guarantee you, if you make a report to us, whether it's bullying or not, we're going to be doing something. I just can't tell you what that something is. But the matrices provided in the board policy does give you a pretty general guideline as to what some of those consequences might be. The thing to realize too is, while we have a reporting form under JICKR, it's not necessarily required that someone fills that out. A phone call, an email, a face-to-face conversation, those are all suitable ways to report things. And I know some people like hearing and some don't, but if we don't know about it, there's not much we can do about it. Now, our teachers are extremely proactive. Out on the playground, they're monitoring, in the dining rooms, everywhere in our school, especially those less-than-structured environments outside of a classroom. And we really work really hard to prevent things from happening. But there are things that happen, you know, kids are, kids are kids and they're, and they're clever and they know how to be away from the adults when they do things, or a less-structured environment like a school bus, or perhaps a playing field, or unfortunately, the internet. If we don't know about it, I would rather know in the beginning, and maybe it's not bullying, but it's something we now closely monitor. We've had in the past, some parents come up to us in March and they're like, this has been going on since October. And it was, well, I wish I had known, this has probably been a very challenging four or five months for your child and there's probably things we could have done as a school. It is something we take very seriously. I think when we talk about safety at all three of our schools, we talk about it in two ways, you know, doors being locked and drills and all that stuff. But another part of safety is how you're feeling, sort of, we tell kids in their brain and in their heart and in their belly. You know, if you don't feel safe and comfortable at school, you're going to have a very challenging time learning. So our teachers need to create that safe environment using PBIS and responsive classroom in Olvea's so that we can prevent some of this stuff before it happens. So that's sort of, you know, bullying in a nutshell. But again, if parents ever have questions, feel free to call. Any of the schools will happy to walk you through anything. If you're not sure, you know, they talked about unwanted behaviors, sometimes we call it bothering versus bullying, you know, someone is bothering someone and doing something unkind, it just doesn't rise to the level. But we need to know about it. And then, once we engage in those conversations, it sort of sheds a light on it and helps us with our preventative measures after the fact. So if something happens, we address the student. If we don't see it happen again, that's pretty successful for us. But that communication's going to be key between the home and the school for that. Questions from the board?
So you would suggest calling the three, one of the three of you, rather than attacking it on social media?
I would, you know. I would, I, you know, I, there's a lot of people who, you know, keyboard warriors and they take to social media. I don't, I'm not on social media, so to speak. I mean, I have our Marston School account. So then I hear about it third party a week later and if I had known about it with a direct conversation, I could have done something about it. So come to us, you know, send an email. I know we have the See Something, Say Something, we're working on the anonymous tip line. It's hard to substantiate anonymous reports, just keep that in mind, it is outlined in the policy, but I'd rather know anonymously so at least the radars and the feelers are out in our school that, hey, there might be something going on with these two students we need to take a closer look at. But open and honest communication is going to be the best way to report bullying to the schools or suspected bullying.
Should you have the courage to name the person that you suspect is the perpetrator of the bullying?
Yeah, we, you know, the thing is, I need to know who the other student is. So if I get a report from, you know, Suzie's mom and they don't want to tell us who's bothering her, we'll keep an eye out on Suzie and kind of try to figure it out. But if you just tell us, you know, she's been having problems with Johnny on the bus or Johnny on the playground, it's a lot easier for us to start an investigation and start looking to it and then put some of those preventative measures that we might have to have in place. But, yeah, again, direct, just come to us and communicate and, you know, let us know who is involved. Because if you think about it, the police, sometimes they investigate things and they don't know who the criminal might be and then they have a longer investigation where if they knew because they found fingerprints or there were clues, or someone told them who it might have been, it's easier to then go talk to a suspect and dig into that a little bit. You know, it's alleged perpetrators, it's alleged victims until we substantiate something, but, you know, come to us and talk to us.
These are also teachable moments, I guess is what I want to say, is that when, the whole goal of changing behavior is really around educating the students. So we not only want to help the student that is being bullied, but we also want to teach the student that's doing the bullying different ways to communicate his or her needs, if that makes sense. So I think that there's, there's two sides of it and I think you talked about it a little bit, but the goal is really to educate, make it a teachable moment so that we can stop it. The sooner we know about it, the sooner we can stop it, the sooner the message is being sent. Unfortunately, if it's not, if it doesn't get reported and it does continue, a lot of times what happens is it escalates because the child is not getting the feedback that it's not okay. So it is important that we hear about it as soon as we know it's happening and there's a higher likelihood that we can do something to stop it. And I know that this board is very, very concerned with this policy. In fact, we met last year to shorten the timeline in our efforts to really make sure we were trying to mitigate those unwanted behaviors. So I guess I just want to reemphasize that and the importance of it. And the goal is really to educate and to teach.
I have a question. I know that PBIS has, and I don't know if it's being used, but the SWISS, where you can keep track of all the different infractions and whatever, and then have the data to prove that, oh, we're, we're having a problem with this, but not with this, but that, do the other schools, A, first of all, do we have SWISS being used? Or do you have some way that you are monitoring the different behaviors that are causing issues?
Yeah, we use Alma currently. We're able to use a different, it's just, it's a, a good way for everyone to kind of be on the same page with our students so we can have that whole wraparound support. It's a good way to have our progressive discipline lined out. You know, we want to make sure that we're addressing things in the classroom or in the hallways before we, you know, and then bringing in the parents to see what kind of, what kind of things we can, we can work on as a team there before we start handing out further discipline. So, yes. Our PBIS approach is a little bit, is, we took it and we made it our own. Over the summer, our universal team met over the, over the course of two or three days, I forget, and we just put, we really took what was PBS and we made it our own and, and made it our own Hampton way. So, you know, we are, we're really proud of the work that we're doing and we're continuing to send kudos cards home to our kids who are, who might be under the radar for things. We just had some Students of the Month that we celebrated last month and, yeah, it was, and it's all been really great. We have a pep rally coming up next, next week to kind of bring everyone together, so.
Do, do the other two schools, do you have a way of keeping data on infractions as they're going on?
Yes, so, and I'm not sure if the Academy's still using, but I know K-5, we use Behavior Incident Forms. So, one, it's a paper form anyone can fill out on our staff and just about a behavioral infraction. Those are not only stored in hard copy, but entered into Alma as well. So if you were to pull up a student, you could find their, you know, attendance records, their academic records, and then all of their disciplinary reports, so every infraction they participated in. We also use a progressive system as well on a reporting form where if it's their first, second, or third offense, you know, we graduate in terms of the disciplinary action we take. Also, when we have students get to a third offense of the same behavioral infraction, we call a team together to start looking a little closer at the student and why they might be, you know, exhibiting some of those behaviors. So, yeah, we put it in Alma as well and, and track it very closely with all of our students.
It just, but might be interesting for us as a board that maybe, I don't know, February or March, if we could see, like, where it's trending, what, what kind of behaviors are trending? Like, is it the tardy? Is that like the big, big focus thing? Or is it, you know, tattletaling in kindergarten or something? You know, where, what, where, and our students as a whole, where, what, what are we seeing as the discipline issues? And then maybe, again, the specialty ways that we can address those as a whole, as, you know?
Definitely, because we, you know, look at that data too as we're doing. When we talk about data dives and we look at academics and also Saber's Data of Social Emotional Learning as part of our MTSSB system, we always look at some of the disciplinary stuff too. So sometimes it paints a clear picture, you know, depending on how they're doing academically, how they're rating on an internal screener, and then the number of infractions they have. And it can be red flags or, you know, cries for help or a student calling out that they need additional support, they just aren't sure how to communicate that. So that data can be pretty telling for us in terms of what do we need to do to help children.
I guess if we're not really faithfully adhering to PBIS, by the way, I don't blame you for not doing that, but more sense to make it to wrong. Are we still paying them?
Less.
Sorry.
Are we still paying for the PBIS? There used to be a cost involved.
No, I don't believe we are. We've been working, you know, with Sarah Philian as far as, as some work that we had from last year. And she's really kind of helped us get our own identity. And I think it's important that our, especially for our staff, that we take ownership. We have, we're fortunate to have a, a lot of senior teachers who, who take pride in where they work. And so it was great to really see them rally around and as a new person too, it was great to see all the work that we, they have done in the past and really hit the ground running with some of the ideas that they've had, some of the things that they've tried that didn't work, some things that, you know, so that was really great to see.
So two more comments, questions. A key component of PBIS used to be the rollouts and it, it would identify what you're working on for, say, that month or, or whatever. And there used to be skits and they'd roll it out in a million different ways. I, I know you mentioned an assembly. Are there other things being planned?
Yeah, we're still ongoing work. We meet monthly, so our, we have our, this month, we are doing our pep rally where we're going to have a rock, paper, scissors off and a family feud. And each one of the advisories are going to paint a banner as, or color a banner as they walk in. We're still evolving. So we, you know, we, over the summer, really kind of laid some really good groundwork. We discussed the processes and how we wanted to really handle communication for all the, for the incidences, that we do have ways to report and things to do that. So, yeah, we are evolving and, you know, as we're, we're rolling out our Tier 1 support for our students, we're kind of starting to look next month at the data that, that you were talking about of who, you know, who are our students that we need a little bit more support there. In addition, Ms. Levine and I have been coming into their, to the CPTs for all the teams and working with them to discuss any issues that have been going on. I've been making some contacts with, with the parents and we've been great, we've been receiving some really great support for everyone that we've been going on. Feel as though, especially as a new person in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, the more relationships that you make with the students, the better that you can make an impact with them. So first couple, first couple of weeks here, month, you know, we've, we're just trying to develop those relationships between the parents, the students, and the staff and, you know, giving that wraparound support. But, yeah, as far as that goes, as far as a monthly rollout, you know, we are implementing, you know, Students of the Month. We have kudos cards going out to, from each team for students who might not make the Student of the Month and we just, but we want to recognize the hard work that they're doing. So those are the things that we are trying to implement as well as, you know, reintroducing the, our, you know, our academy expectations for all of the different community areas that we have, so.
And, and finally, I'm going to piggyback on to what Ginny said. I saw that article myself.
Yeah.
And then I saw another article in the Boston Globe, so I'm not sure if I'm, I'm confusing the two, but I think the one in Rochester is based heavily on restorative justice.
Yes.
Is that, is that true?
Yes, that's true, yes.
So that's kind of a component that I've been interested in for quite, quite a while. So I, I would look into that. I would definitely look into that.
Yeah, it's something that I've spent a lot of time in my, in my early years as far as getting into administration with restorative practices. Kind of started off my career in that, in that field, you know, kind of being a, I, I feel as though if you can mend a relationship between a teacher and a student, it's going to, it's going to pay off dividends rather than a detention or any type of a suspension that you can hand out. Kind of seeing the personal side of all the work that a teacher does and, you know, having that personal relationship and that comp, that, that type of conversation between a student and the teacher to, to, to recognize the amount of work that our teachers are putting in and the disruptions or anything that might happen in a classroom really kind of, you know, they take time away from their family to prepare these lessons and for these guys. And so bringing that human element into that conversation is, is something that we, we're striving to do. You know, like we had said, we want to be educational rather than punitive. And so restorative practice is something that we are, part of our approach to handling our discipline, you know, making sure that those things go. But to further on, I know our students graduate here and they do go to Winnicott, but they're still our students. And in our meetings with, with Winnicott, we, you know, we wanted to make sure we got a better understanding of who our students become over at Winnicott. And when our conversations with the, with the administrative team over there, they did say that we are, that the Hampton students are, are really well-adjusted over there. They are pretty, they're model citizens within that school community, both academically, socially, and emotionally. So the work that we're doing here is paying dividends over there. I know it's a different board, but I did just want us to bring that information here.
I also wanted, I had a question and then a kudo. Mr. Sadler, do you have any big issues at all with the use of cell phone?
Not since we've been peppering our caring adults and families with the School Board policy. You know, for us, it doesn't happen in school. We request, you know, that students keep them turned off, the same thing with smart watches, as outlined in the policy, they're turned off throughout the day in the backpacks. So we don't have as much issue, I mean, sometimes things will spark up with cell phones, but it's more outside of school, Snapchat, TikTok, Instagram, whatever, the new stuff is that kids might be using. That's where we start to see cellphone issues.
And my kudo is that from everything I've heard just in talking with a lot of different students at different grade levels, we seem to be doing, you seem to be doing, and your students a great job tamping down on the use of cell phones during the school day and they just seem to be a lot more respectful and about keeping them in their backpack and not having them out. And I, I just, I want to give you kudos for that because it, it's showing, it's showing. And the kids that are at the high school, those freshmen, it's showing in them, they're, and I don't know if they're getting it from their siblings or from what, but there's much less use of cell phones during the school day. So whatever you're doing, keep doing it. It's great.
Thank you.
We can also add restorative practices to our goals focus as well. That's a great, that's a great addition.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any more questions related to the bullying presentation? No? So while you're here, let's talk about data.
Okay, give me, give me one sec. Okay. So assessment results, we're going to talk about at all the schools. Just a super quick overview of the assessments we're using. I'm going to let Mark talk about the last two because they're more in his wheelhouse. We use DIBELS a little bit in 3rd grade, but we're piloting it. New Hampshire SAS is our end-of-the-year summative assessment as required by the state. It used to be SPEC, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. It used to be NECAP, it was probably something before that, but, and New Hampshire SAS is that big end-of-the-year test. That while it does give us information about students, it's really more used to assess our curriculum and our instructional practices and the effectiveness of our teaching. STAR is a shorter assessment. We say three plus times a year because all students participate in it at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. Some of our students that we're progress monitoring, we do it a little more frequently. While SAS is a multi-day, you know, two days for math, two days for reading, one or two days for writing, 5th grade also has a science component, as does 8th grade. STAR is much shorter, it's a computerized assessment, it's multiple choice. SAS is in-depth, you know, if you're talking about SAS reading, you might be reading three articles and then answering a slew of questions by synthesizing information, while STAR is generally a little bit shorter. STAR is supposed to predict how students will perform on the state test. Sometimes it's accurate and in line. There is some new stuff coming out with cut points and percentiles based on some new data that, that Renaissance and STAR have put out. But those are two of the bigger ones that we use with all students. But I'll let Mark talk a little bit about DIBELS and Acadians.
Yeah, so we, we rely heavily on DIBELS at Center School. You know, it's a benchmarking tool, but also has a progress monitoring component to it. So all students are benchmarked, fall, winter, spring. Our students that we pick up for Tier 2 interventions are progress monitored about, you know, two, two times a month. Again, it's, you know, in kindergarten, 1st grade, it's basic literacy, literacy skills. And it's kind of moving into 2nd grade is that oral reading, oral reading fluency and also looking at their accuracy level. As students get older, if DIBELS is continued to be used, it's, you know, the ultimate goal is the, the comprehension component and, you know, that, that reading to learn rather than learning to read. So we rely heavily on that to make groupings and, you know, decide where our students are to start the year and kind of monitor their growth at Center School. Acadians, I've spoken about a few times before the board. It is, you can kind of think of it as like a DIBELS programming. It has a different name, but, you know, again, it's very basic numeracy skills in kindergarten and 1st grade. And then it kind of moves into computation. And in 2nd grade, you're also looking at some word problems, time measurement, money, some of those, some of those early skills. And it's actually, it has been nice coming over to Hampton because I've seen, after reviewing the data, the concept and application scores are much higher than what I saw in Bedford. I think a lot of that has to do with the Number Corner program that our teachers use. So it was nice to see that, you know, students know the value of a nickel. And, you know, those are skills that our, you know, 1st and 2nd graders have a good understanding of where, you know, in my other district, you know, at times that was, it was not, it was not taught as much or it was one of those items that was left to the end of the year. So it's awesome to see the teachers using Number Corner and it's, it reflected very nicely in the 2nd grade concept and application score. So next year, I will bring forth data for Acadians based on the year, but that is new to us this year. And then, I know all those numbers are really small, so I apologize, but these are our DIBELS scores, so as you can see, I'm not going to go through all of them, but overall, our K to 2 at or above benchmark, we moved from 60 to 75% from fall to the spring. And our well below number dropped from 22 to 13, so that's definitely the goal. Our below benchmark moved from 18 to 12%. So as a building, I feel like as we've done more research and we've had a number of staff participate, actually, most staff, most classroom teaching staff participate in the Letters Program, learn more about the science of reading. DIBELS is a back tool by Letters, then, you know, we're, we're seeing good, good progress and continue to, you know, hope to see that growth this school year. So that is our, that is our DIBELS data. And then we also have our STAR data from last year for Grade 2. I know that STAR is looked at as they move up to Marston and beyond, so we want to make sure that we're giving our 2nd graders kind of that first hit of that. So if you look at the ELA proficiency, it moved from 61 to 75% from fall to spring last year, and then the math, 73 to 81% proficient last year. So a lot of good stuff at Center School last year. So kind of what's new and, you know, what's next? Again, DIBELS is going to be constantly monitored. I'm looking at how we're doing progress monitoring the building, that's just one of the areas as a new principle. You know, I'm analyzing, you know, how our data's looked at. We're definitely data-focused through PLCs, but I, I think another layer of, you know, We're definitely data focused through PLCs, but I, I think another layer of, you know, conversation could be going on. So I'm planning with the intervention team right now about what that should look like when we get benchmark reports back. The Acadians math has been adopted, so we're looking forward to using that to ensure that we're, we're ensuring that the right kids are getting intervention. The data review meetings, again, we're also develop, you know, we're working on our RTI model, just trying to make that a little more aligned with grades three to five. So making sure we're bringing the right data to those meetings. Our new math interventionist, that has been a huge help. We also were able to get a third title tutor this year. So that means more students getting services that are kind of cusp-y and in the past may not have seen either a certified educator or title tutor. So we're getting our bang for our buck there. So again, very appreciative. And then again, we are exploring new math programs under the guidance of demonstrated success this year. We have a meeting this coming Friday, so we're looking forward to sinking our teeth into what they have to present to us and looking at possible programs to pilot, as Dr. Costa mentioned earlier. And I know we don't have SAS data, but I'm, I'll definitely be looking at that over time because our kids do feed up to Marston and they're all, you know, our SAU 90 students. I don't know if anybody has any Center School questions right now. Okay. All right. So our STAR data is presented. You can see math is the left-hand column, reading is the right-hand column. You know, a little bit of a dip in our third grade from the fall to the spring, stayed pretty consistent in fourth grade, and then some nice growth in math in fifth grade. The one thing that we're noticing, as you'll see in this, is pretty consistent with statewide averages, is our ELA seems to be climbing a little bit faster than our mathematics. I'll touch upon that when we get into SAS data, but I'm excited about some of the things going on at Center, and I'll talk about that in a bit. Our reading data seem to have grown more, I think because we've spent the last few years really putting a concentrated effort on ELA. So this year is the first year we're putting in our fully revised and implemented curriculum. We've been making adjustments to it over the course of last year with demonstrated success as support, and I think it's paying off. I'll be excited to see where we, when the rest of the beginning of the year data comes in, the mid-year and end of the year, and how we kind of do now that we've spent all that time. My hope is that we'll see similar results in mathematics now that that's our primary curricular focus as a district. But again, moving in the right direction in terms of our school averages in both areas. And it's just a screening tool, it's one indicator, but it does help us with other data points, you know, provide services and interventions to students. Okay. What you're looking at is SAS, the New Hampshire State Assessment for English Language Arts. This includes both the reading assessment and the writing. And the writing was done differently last year. It was a standalone assessment and hand scored in March. The tricky part about that is March is before we've taught everything in writing at each grade level, but that's when the assessment was. So you can look at this a couple of ways. Sometimes I look just grade three over and see how we're doing as a, as a grade level in terms of assessing our curriculum. But because each one of those colors is a different cohort of students, you're sort of comparing apples, oranges, and bananas. So it's easier sometimes to follow the steps down. Grade three students as third graders were in 2022, were 63% proficient, stayed kind of flatlined in 2023, and then last year made some tremendous growth moving up to the 76 percentile. So that's a select group of the entire grade level, but watching their growth over a few years. Again, from 22 to 23, some nice growth as well in grade four, moving across. And then our students are making progress as well. Our third graders going into fourth graders, that purple cohort. It'll be interesting to see where the orange goes, how the purple goes. And then, it's not on here, but our colors then bleed into the academy. So you can kind of look at, you know, our fifth graders left at this in 2023. How did they perform the following year after a sixth grade instruction? Our school average has stayed kind of consistent, 71, 70, 72. We're moving in the right direction. And again, I think that focus on ELA last year and over the last few years and now having what we have now is going to really be to our benefit. We're generally above the state averages at every grade level and then school-wide, but I take that with a grain of salt because New Hampshire's a very diverse state in terms of education. We have some very big communities and some really small communities, but this is a good snapshot that what we're doing in Hampton is working. You know, we're moving in the direction we want to be moving in. I would like, obviously, scores a little higher than what we're used to seeing pre-COVID, but this is what we're dealing with right now. And there was an interesting article that we could share with you put out, and they show some of the graphs and stuff about the students over the last few years, and it does show ELA moving up a little faster and math seems to be plateauing a little bit across the state. But that's English Language Arts. Math, so again, if you're watching those cohorts, we've had some dips going down in all of our, in all of our grade levels, you know, as they're moving from third to fourth to fifth graders, which is going to be important data for us to use. We've already conducted a pretty in-depth analysis with demonstrated success about not only 68%, you know, it's a fine number, it doesn't tell you the whole story. Really diving into each area of the test in which standards are being assessed and how our students perform is a little more helpful for us and informational. It's sort of like the basketball analogy. When you see at the end of the game how many points a team had, you don't always know how each individual player did. So this is a good number for third grade, but what we do is then dive into every single class and then every single student so we can make sure that they're making the growth and getting support that they need. Again, our numbers are still above the state, which is good, but we're sort of flatlined, which is pretty in line with the trend lines that we're seeing across the entire state at this time. Still doing better in a lot of areas, but a lot of room for growth and improvement for sure in math. So last year, because we had the math scores earlier than the ELA, we didn't get the ELA scores till mid-September because normally this is an August presentation, we were able to have our teachers really take a hard look at their math data. We've revised some of our data tracking procedures, so students, I mean, teachers now, when they go into their data grids at the beginning of the year to see where their students, you know, performed last year and on the beginning of their assessments, we're putting in the class average. Because sometimes you look and you're like, well, the class was 70, that's great. That's great if they started at 50 or 60, but if they started 80, that's not great. So it's just more data that we can give to teachers to help inform and guide their instruction. We are doing the same thing in ELA now that our ELA scores have been fully released, and we're looking at that again at the individual student level, the classroom level, the grade level, and then again as a school. We're engaging in the implementation of our newly refined ELA curriculum. So again, all the work we've done the last two or three years now comes to fruition and we'll be fully using everything that we've developed over the last few years. Exploring and piling the math programs similar, we've noticed, you know, a lack of consistency in terms of routines, procedures, languages, at least K5 where I really look. I'm super excited that there's a math interventionist in place and three Title I tutors. That just means more students are getting support and going to be better equipped with a solid foundation when they come from second grade into third grade. Because even though it's a third grade assessment, there's a lot of prerequisite skills they, they obtain K2 that we really need for our students to be successful. We're going to be working on utilizing the modular assessments. Those are sort of like practice tests you can use. It's test-practice, it's skill reinforcement, it's small group instruction. It creates common assessments, so some of our grade levels use them for math. And what's nice is it's pretty much exactly with different numbers what the kids are going to see in the spring. Super important for third graders who've never done SAS. To just start doing test prep, quote unquote, a month before is not really going to be as beneficial as if we expose student to it a lot over the course of the year. There's a lot of stamina involved in the New Hampshire SAS assessment. The nice thing about the modular assessments is the statewide system just spits back a lot of data for you. It targets students where their strengths and skill deficits are, and then you can really plan pretty informed groupings in your classroom. And then, of course, if we need tier-two or tier-three support, we can do that. And then, we've been doing it for the last couple of years, but really taking a hard look at that balance between social-emotional learning and academics, so the MTSSB and the MTSSA. You know, if a student is struggling behaviorally or with mental health or emotionally, that's going to impact their academics. If their academics are too easy or too challenging, that's going to impact their mental health and their social-emotional well-being. So we really started at some of our meetings, we put up two display screens, and one of them is all the academic data and one is all the SEL data. And we really take a look at each child and make sure both of them are getting the support they need in the areas that they need. We're hoping that that sort of thing, you know, along with teaching things like perseverance and grit and stamina and things like that are really going to help us on, on some of our statewide assessment scores. But room, room for growth and improvement for sure.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go in a little bit of reverse order. We'll start off with our, our spring SAS for our ELA. And again, I think Mr. Sadler just pretty laid out how you can read the chart, so I won't go too much into that. But school average, you know, 59, 70 was the spring of '22, then we're up to 74 and then up to 75. Again, above the state average, definitely room for improvement. We are, we are working towards, you know, like, like Ms. Sadler said, you know, we finished up our new curriculum. Now we're just working on better ways to set our expectations up for our ELA. This is, you know, part of the work that I'm really excited about. I'm a math guy, so the data, looking at the data and crunching numbers and ways to break it down is something that we're really excited about. Over to the math numbers. Our math numbers, you know, a little bit lower. So again, 48, up to 58, then up to 59, so plateauing a little bit. Really excited about the new math curriculum, which I will talk about, that we're rolling out at the, at Hampton Academy. And then over to our STAR data here. So, you know, starting to see a little bit of a dip in the math from fall to spring, but our, our reading proficiency is, is up in that. But that's, you know, this is kind of the information that we've been, that Ms. Levine and I have been inheriting, but, you know, for us, we really want to take a look at our RTI model. We're going to use our STAR data really to place our students and disaggregate that data to really break down what these kids need. Our RTI committee has already had one meeting. We're looking to revamp our whole system a little bit so we can use our sharp blocks as effectively as possible. We're bringing in iXL. iXL is a platform that allows students to really target whether areas of, of weaknesses, and then it adapts itself to help bring those students' weaknesses up. So I was just in a conversation today, if you're in a, if you're working on reading or illiteracy and your reading comprehension is weak, so is your reading fluency, it'll target and direct that. So as your reading fluency gets better, then we can work on your reading comprehension. And so it's, it's a really great tool to help us, but using that shark block to identify and group kids so that we're rolling out, we're rolling out implementations and, you know, implementing new strategies for our students to help support them. Want to familiarize our students, like I said, with the, with the state exams, you know, there are a lot, they're, they do take a while. They're a long test, and, you know, we want to make sure that our students are familiar with it so that they're not getting hung up on how to take these exams, and it's a true test of what they know, rather than, you know, I think I've taken more SAT prep courses than anyone in the world. So, you know, there was ones on learning the material and then other ones on how to beat the test. So we just want to familiarize our, our things with that. We're also setting our expectations up a little bit more, just because of, you know, the data that we're seeing post, the post the pandemic, you know, is kind of shifting our, shifting the expectations a little bit. So we want to hold our kids to a higher expectation. You know, the more that we expect from our students, that's going to be great. Our building thinking classrooms is a very, very cool tool. As a former math teacher, math teacher at heart, you know, it's really an application of, of the math that they're, they're working on. It's really exciting to see the kids up and engaged rather than talk and teach that we've been doing for several, for, I don't know, how long have we been teaching math? So, you know, coming in with a brain teaser and getting kids communicating and, and, you know, trying to problem solve, and then later using that strategy to, to bring in the knowledge from the course to, back to that problem solving. You know, we can teach you how to solve for x, but if, once we put a word problem in front of you, everyone gets a little hung up, I don't know how to do this. So we're trying to, trying to figure that out. And like I said, we finished our ELA curriculum, and now we're just trying to establish some rubrics and expectations for our students. I think we've seen some growth, growth across the whole district. So we're really just trying to fine-tune how we're going to evaluate our students on that. With that said, do you guys have any questions on that?
I think we're good.
All right.
Did we send anybody to the state assessment conference they had two weeks ago?
We, we did. The accountability workshop, I believe, is what you're talking about on October 1st and 2nd.
Yep.
Administ, principals, I know, Mr. Sadler, you did.
Yeah, I had a small team because, you know, the DOE puts it out, so that's good. The price was incredible for a conference. So we sent a, a small team, but reps each day. So the first day I sent my reading specialist and an ESOL teacher, who does a lot with not only the ESOL assessments, but also English language and teaching English. The second day, my math target assist teacher and my reading target assist teacher attended. They brought back some great information. We meet with them every other week and have in-depth conversations about that. And they plan to roll some stuff out to the staff just about how we're using accountability and assessments. You know, a lot was geared around the SAS and how things are going to look, the testing and assessment schedules, a lot of things in those lines. I'm not sure how much would apply K2, I'll be totally honest with you. I'm sure they had some stuff out there for early child, but it seemed pretty heavily focused on exactly what we're doing.
And I had the opportunity to attend it last year, Ginny. It was excellent.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we made sure that people were aware of it. We did.
I heard it was good.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, they do a good job.
Yeah.
Nathan Green and friends.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Capital Improvement Plan. It's next on my, it's next on my list.
Mariah, do you want to talk on page 47? I see, there's a nice list of projects.
So the capital improvement plan is, we usually send that out to the town, and that's due next week, and I've been working on it. We usually just do the long-term facility maintenance of the 300. Last year, we did that, and then the HVAC. You do six, seven years out for the town. And we were, we're planning, our plans are to keep it the same, that 300 in the Warren article for, the Warren article for '25, '26. However, the thought is to move that up maybe to 400. And then, in the near future, in this six-year plan, I need to come up with, we're going to need some pond work. I am having, this summer, we had the rain issue, and it did a sinkhole, and the town fixed it for us. And doing so made the state give us some items to have looked at. So now I am working with a engineer to come and look at the dam and the pond and figure out preventative maintenance, if we need to replace things, what needs to be done. I'm really not sure until they get there. I'm hoping to have him next week and get more of an idea, but I'm sure it's going to take longer than him just looking at it. I think he has to do videos inside and pictures and measurements and stuff. But I don't think it's something that we have to put in our docket, '25, '26, maybe '27, maybe '28. But I just want to get the ball rolling to figure out what is needed for down the line. Also, the phone system that we had put in when we, when SAU 90 started 15 years ago, we have copper lines, and it's really no longer working with the phone system. So we have to look at either rewiring all three buildings, well, the academy, we won't have to, but Center and Marston School rewiring it, or coming up with somehow to manipulate the copper into... So I'm working on that. We, with Dave Hansberry in technology, we're going to meet with phone companies to figure out what it entails. Am I going to have to do electrical? I know at, on this list, I have Center School and Marston School for electrical. We have a lot of outlets and stuff that need to be, be replaced. So do I do that all at once? So those are conversations I'm going to have with the phone company first about that and what year I need to stick that in the CIP and what the cost of that is. But the guestimate right now is about 100 per school.
There is a trickle-down on that, FYI, having done this at the library with the, the fire, your fire panels and your security panels.
And then we have the, the elevators too, right? So it's, it's going to be project, and I definitely am, it's in my calendar to start looking at that. So that's going to have to come into '26, '27, '28 year in the CIP. The other thing is, I gave you a list of items, and why I would like to take that 300 in prior, in the next few years and move it up is because everything's gone up in price, and it's taking so much longer than expected to do phased work. So the lightings that we've been phased now for five to eight years is only a quarter of the way, I have a quarter left to complete at Center School and have to complete at Marston School. So they're just taking a lot longer to do. We have windows that have to be done at Center School, windows that should be done at Marston School. We have a floor that needs to be done at Center School. So we have some big projects that need to get done. And so maybe try not to do as many phased things and do them all at once with that money instead, and see what that would look like. Or instead of phasing out the rest of the lighting, at the end of each fiscal year, say, April, if the fund balance looks like it could handle a few lights done at Marston School or Center School to complete them in the fund balance, try to get those done at the end of the year. at the end of the year rather than try to put them in the, in the CIP money. Those are just some of the thoughts and some of the items, the big items that need to get completed in the next couple of years. And I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that and know that I am looking at it. I will get you information, especially once we get the dam stuff. It's stuff we're going to have to have conversations with.
21.
Yeah, that's, so this, this list is, was started in 2021. It's still the same list and I'm still writing on it. So that is that, that's the CIP. It's due next Friday to the town and I think some of the items, like the dam, I'm going to put on the list, but not put money amount on it yet because I won't know, but so that it's on there. And maybe, I think, Molly, you're the CIP person. Maybe we can, I can kind of give you, we can have a conversation about it before you go. Yeah.
Well, that rolls right into your regular presentation.
So that goes into my report. My report, we're still setting up purchase orders, getting the ball rolling through the first food payrolls. Everything seems to be coming together. We've got all the grants approved and set up for the new year and put in the budget. I'm closing out the old grants next week, so you'll see that. And I will have the finalization of the ESSAR grant on the school board, on the school website, once that's completed. And then the, you'll notice that the grants are going to be very minimal once it's done. The food service, it, it got approved. So as of next month, all the revenues for August and September will come through and you'll see a report on that next month. And then the only, I did add a check that we received that I would like to have you approve if possible. It was the cable franchise fee.
So that's a check for $12,450. Would anybody like to motion to accept?
I'd move that we accept that.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this? No? All right. All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only other few things is we have negotiations going on for CNSESPA and doing a lot of work on that. But with that, I'm also trying to get our budget book done. I am waiting for health insurance. Health insurance will no longer have the GMR. They will be giving, they were supposed to call me today, but it didn't come through. They will just be giving us the percent increase instantly. No more GMR. So we also am, we are adjusting, they, they no longer have one of our plans that we utilize. There's only 20 people on the plan, four teachers, the rest are support staff, Blue Choice. So I'm working on that and numbers for a similar plan for everyone and discussing that through negotiations. The other thing that I'm waiting on is PRIMEX for their increases. Other than that, I, the budget book is pretty close to completion. So I think that we had some dates that we were discussing and wanted to see if we could get them on the books so we could start that. And I really had to have a drop-down date of when I have to have the book done by. I think that they were Wednesdays.
Mostly, yep. I've got them here.
The 16th?
I have, yes, the 6th, October 16th, October 30th, November 7th, and November 20th.
November what?
20th.
November 7th and November 20th.
Yes. 20th, if we absolutely had to, because I really need to get them done.
Before Thanksgiving.
Before Thanksgiving.
Yep.
And we were challenged to find those dates given the CNSESPA negotiations, which is why you can see the big gap between the 7th and the 20th, and then you have Veterans Day in there as well. So we're, we're hoping November 7th. And we said we'd start a little earlier. Do you have the time? Do you want me to pull it?
5:30?
5:30 to 9:00.
Yep. We thought we'd do a 5:30 to 9:00 if that's okay with folks in the sense that we hope to get it done by November 7th if possible. We could actually be in the SAU 90 conference room or meeting room.
Yep.
Is that set up for AV?
It can be. I can, I can check, but I'll double-check with Nick. I'm pretty sure it can be.
Okay. Awesome. That's great.
Unless you have a preference. Okay. All right. And the, so it'll be at SAU 90 meeting room.
Yep. Absolutely.
At 5:30.
That's right. All right. Do we think we're good on those dates? Any major objections? No? Okay. That's fantastic. And as I said in the email, if anybody has anything they really want, are super focused on in the budget, definitely please talk to Mariah ahead of time just so we can kind of get all that going and, and trying to play catch-up during the meetings if we can.
Yeah. I'll do some research. I'll put it in, whatever.
I think we're going to be very, we'll be very judicious this year in our hopes of trying to pass two contracts. So I think we're going to be very, very mindful of the budget. There are some drivers that will add some increases, including the math, the math programs. Those are not, those are pretty costly, but they're very important to us. But that will be the, that'll be the only big driver, really.
Okay. All right. Resignations, I think, is next.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So let me, let's see. Two. And those down to...
Thank you.
Andrea. Me. Action. Okay. Yeah. I'm wondering.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do have two resignations tonight. The first, I think, very unfortunately, is from Mr. Keith Lassard, which, you know, he did mention earlier during, did I, that's how they were clipped together.
Well, they are the same.
You should have two. One from Caroline. I, though, I have Caroline still in my hand.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. We can go ahead.
Yep, that's okay. She didn't give out the second one. That's why.
I didn't give out the second one.
That's okay.
And there are less copies of them.
All right, that's okay. I don't need that.
I'm going to hold that. Sorry. I was just doing that one first. So, sorry, Wendy. No, 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 it's okay. That was me. Oh. So, yeah, so the first one is from Mr. Lassard. So after 24 and a half years, he has announced his intention to retire. I think we are all very sad about it. He's done a fantastic job. I know. So, do I have a motion to accept his retirement?
I would move that we accept the resignation of Mr. Lassard with, I don't want to say deepest regret, but regret doesn't seem enough.
Doesn't seem, yes.
With regret.
To encompass it, yes. Agreed. Agreed. I'll second that one. All in favor?
Now, having done that.
Yes.
It's October.
Yes.
November, December. Are we going to have enough time to do what we need to do?
Well, we, we just got the letter and I did post, we did post, we spoke with him regarding the job description. We looked at what was currently, what we had at SAU 90, but we also looked at the one that's on Front Line just to compare. And we also had a conversation with our leadership team to make sure that it included everything that he felt was important. And so he worked on it with Kathy Tuck. And so we did post that on Friday of last week. You know, it, it will be interesting to see what happens. I know that Mariah and I had an opportunity to meet with him on Monday to come up with a punch list of things that we had, questions we had in terms of some of these ongoing projects. So he said, you know, one of the things he did say is that although he is going to look forward to his retirement, he said, "I'm certainly not leaving the country," and that he would be available if we so needed him. Obviously, we would do that very judiciously because we know he is retiring and deserves that retirement. We're appreciative of everything he's done, absolutely. But I know that if we were in a bind and we needed to call him with a question, I think he would be responsive to us, knowing Mr. Lassard and his work ethic and his, obviously, his dedication to the town and our district. But we're hopeful. But I'm not, it's not lost on me. These are big shoes to fill.
And there's been conversation already about who would be on the hiring team.
Correct.
For that, correct?
That is correct. Yep. Yeah.
Okay. So the second resignation is from Carolyn Smith. She was a case manager at Hampton Academy.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Policies. So we do have something a little, a little unusual going on. We have, sorry, let me get my entire list here. We do have some regular second reads. There is a list here. We have some first reads. And then we have three that are noodle, new Title IX policies, AC, ACAC, and ACE. So nondiscrimination, equal opportunity employment, and anti-discrimination, Title IX prohibition of sex discrimination, sex-based harassment, policy and grievance procedure, and procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of ability. And although this will be the first time they've come before the board, we do usually do two reads. It has been recommended to us by the New Hampshire School Board Association that we do push those forward and get them in place as soon as possible. This is based on changes in Title IX laws and regulations, so we need to get those updated and in place as soon as possible. So we do have a policy, BGB, that kind of governs how we approve policies, but it does have language related to urgent situations, which I think unless there are any objections, we will agree that the, specifically the Title IX policies will fall under that. So I would like to accept FAA, GBI, GCC, BC, GCI, GDB, AC, ACAC, and ACE as second reads.
Got a motion?
Yes. I would like to motion. Thank you. So nobody else has to read it again. Do I have a second? You? Bless. I'm sorry. I'm tired. It's the end of a long day. Okay. All in favor? And the others are all first reads, so we will take a look at those again next month. But let us know if you have any questions on those.
Tomorrow, we'll be attending the Bradley Law Conference, and one of the things that we will be talking about is Title IX. So we'll also get a little more information on those, on that one as well. That one is fairly, it's a long one. It's about 26 pages.
And we do expect that some of those actually are temporary, that there will be changes and we will have these come back in front of us again.
Yep.
Soon.
Yep. Correct. Thank you.
All right. Minutes. We have the regular minutes from the September 10th, 2024 meeting. And that meeting was me, Ginny, and Molly. So do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes.
Okay. All right. Those in favor? Those abstaining? Okay. And we also have the minutes from our non-public session, September 10th, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept those?
I move that we accept the non-public minutes.
Okay. All right. Those in favor? Okay. Those abstaining or against and abstain? Thank you. Okay. So, let's ask first, before we do anything else, do we have anyone who would like to come up front for public comment? Okay. Do you want to do public comment? Yes, exactly. So we're going to, we are going to move into non-public. I managed to...[1743.41]